Good evening. This work session of the common council is now called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cress.
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Good evening.
We have a call.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Item number one, Sun Corridor Trail Update.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We kind of have a couple of trail items that we want to cover with you tonight. And so Mike has a presentation and a guest. So we'll take these in the order that they appear. So Mike, you want to introduce your guest and walk us through what you have?
Lauren Bromley is here from Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Department. She's the open space planner for the Maricopa County, and she's the most knowledgeable person about the Sun Corridor Trail. So I brought her along to share all the good information with you, and she's got a lot of really good information. And she's going to have to take off. She's got a long drive back, so she's going to take off right after her presentation. But I'll turn this over to Lauren. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you so much for having me. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Okay, let's get this. I have a presentation that I've prepared for you on the Sun Corridor Trail. So, the Sun Corridor Trail was a trail vision that was thought up by Director RJ Carden, who is the director of the Parks and Recreation Department in Maricopa County, and his counterpart in Pinal and Pima County, both Kent, and another coworker over there. And really, this kind of came into fruition by sitting down over a drink and penciling out this idea of a trail that, hey, wouldn't it be great if we could connect our two counties, Pinal, Pima, or three counties, Pinal, Pima, and Maricopa? And then from there, it kind of grew further and further. So, the idea would be with this trail that you could go from Douglas, Arizona, down in the southeast corner, with nothing but a credit card and some chapstick in your pocket, and go from town to town to town, staying at each place or using the services there and creating that economic connecting factor between those. And we've seen that with trail users, they love to connect the dots. So something like this would be very beneficial to not only connect the communities and the people, but also allow trail users to have that really neat trail experience, similar to the Appalachian Trail or the Pacific Coast Trail. Currently, the idea of the trail, what we've been working towards, is a connection from Douglas, Arizona, through Pima County, Pinal, through Maricopa, up to Coconino, and then west, all the way to Las Vegas. I started working on this project about two years ago when RJ tasked me with creating a PowerPoint for one of his presentations. And when I came up with this PowerPoint, I was so excited about it that he actually asked me if I wanted to present. And from there, it's kind of become my pet project. So the idea, again, would be to link together some of those significant scenic corridors. Okay, so additional interested agencies, these are people that we meet with. We've had several very successful meetings so far, and we have another meeting coming up. I think I sent out to about 140 communities and private organizations, associations, and we will be meeting at the end of September at the Arizona Game and Fish Department's, one of their meeting rooms. So currently, what we're looking at doing is creating more jobs. Trails, while we can't really pinpoint some of those economic factors, it's, they would potentially bring in more money through stays, through purchasing of recreation supplies, that kind of thing, good services. So with the north half, this is just a quick little reference. You can't see the PowerPoint, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. But they, what I had done is we created segments for the trail.
We actually can see it.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, there's a monitor in front, and we all have monitors right here.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad, okay. So now I actually know what I can show you. So what we're working with, some of the counties and some of the cities to create loop systems, the idea would be that we would have a nonprofit that would come in, create this kind of overarching trail system, but each city would be responsible for their own trails and responsible for creating those maps. And then the Sun Corridor Trail Association, which we hope to become a nonprofit, would actually do the marketing and kind of create that umbrella for them to all operate so they all have a standard for how they develop their trails, how they're used, single signage from one end to the other, so there's no confusion. Some of these trails are already in existence, and they will overlap. It will just be called the Sun Corridor. And then others will need to be actually created. So what I went and did was spent months over Google Earth, from about a 40-foot view off the ground, connecting existing trail systems from one to the next city, and starting from Vegas all the way down. We have several different options here, and what we've tasked these cities or counties with doing is looking at these potential options and seeing what would work for them, or even just to get them excited and start doing the work to see if maybe there's a different trail that they would want to use altogether. So Segment 14 would go from Las Vegas down to Searchlight, and these are just very concept. They're not by any means set in stone. Some of these viewpoints are just connections for here. This would be through the Kingman Loop. We've been working hard to create some sort of an example of, or a different type of connection loop, either possibly down south of Golden Valley. There were some options to go through the Surbats, but right now, what we're, I had proposed some of these trails, and then hopefully, some of them will stick. There's so many things we have to keep in mind with doing this. A lot of this would be the Walupi Tribe. We have to make sure that the tribes are involved, especially if we end up using Old Route 66, which does go through tribal land. Trying to connect the dots, as you can see in these maps, some of the land is state, some is BLM, it's checkerboard, so having to be able to connect those, it's really difficult to try and get from one point to another. And with Maricopa County, I don't know if you're aware, but we have a 316-loop trail that has 27 different IGAs through the entire county with cities, and we've purchased state land, which has taken sometimes five years for small little slivers, just to get the right-of-way to go through. So we're pretty well-versed in creating these intergovernment agreements where you've got city to city and using the same trail system and having those linked together and There are a few places that we haven't quite gotten onboard yet, but we are working on them. But, so some places like Williams, they're not too interested in doing a whole new loop trail, but the Coconino County Parks and Recreation Department is very interested in helping us connect. So they might not do a loop, but they will, they are interested in doing a flow-through trail. City of Flagstaff already has a full-circle loop trail, 44.5 miles. And then there's a couple options going from the south from Flagstaff. The Arizona Trail already, it does run along some segments, but as you can see, it's possible that we might end up taking a different trail, which is that orange line, through South, through Lake Mary, and then crossing over into Sedona. Couple options there. And again, these are those concept maps. We are sharing data, we're sharing GIS, we're talking with the National Forest, we're talking with the counties, and some of these, you know, some of the trail builder groups out there, these nonprofits, the volunteer organizations, they're avid users. That's the people we're engaging right now at this level, and it's only been about two years of solid work on this. It's probably going to take a few more. We are looking at different ways to get that 501(c)(3), which hopefully will have some assistance from the National Park Service, which we had applied for a grant for the, for them to help us with the 501(c)(3). And I think by the end of October, they will notify us of whether we got that assistance grant or not. This would be a concept, another concept trail. You can use the green and the orange to possibly loop through the National Forest there. There's campgrounds. The idea here is really that if you could, I think the longest segment from one civilization area, it's, or a gas station, or a place where there's people, some sort of a small town, or anything like that. I believe it was 25 miles from one point to the next was the largest distance anyone would have to travel before they could meet, you know, get to somewhere where they could potentially spend the night or get libations and continue on from there. So the idea is really to have more of this front country trail, not a back country trail, which is what the Arizona Trail is. So if you're wondering, well, why would we do another vertical or, you know, north-to-south trail when we already have the Arizona? The Arizona is really a back country trail. You put a bag on, and you're out for two weeks at a time. This is designed so that people are moving from one to the next, maybe within a 24-hour So this, the Black Canyon Trail Connector from Prescott, currently, this is what Prescott is working on. And this was actually, as I said, you know, I'd done an exercise where I was about 40 feet off the ground. When we eventually did come and meet with Prescott, my trail line, that was concept, was actually almost spot-on with their GIS, that they had gone out and flagged those routes and kind of come up with some of the trail that you see here. So that is actually more, that's actually coming in to fruition, more than just concept. So this is an existed, oh, let me go back. The Black Canyon Stretch, this is already existing. I don't know if you can see the mouse, but from the right slide, the top half is coming in from the north and then going south. Lake Pleasant, this is where I'm stationed out of for my headquarters. So this is the Maricopa Trail. This is what I was referring to. The red is the 315-mile loop, and it's actually more around 346 when you count all the spurs connecting into the various cities. The smaller trail, the Blue Sun Circle Trail, was one of the first original trails that was developed. And then as the city grew and the metropolitan area grew, then they started saying, well, hey, can we connect the outer areas with that? So as I said, we were working with Pinal and Pima County. They're kind of the ringleaders for the south half. And Pinal County, I'm sorry, Pima County, no, I was right, Pinal County. Pinal County would actually be using the canal systems, the CAP Trail. And what they're doing is, they've got those canal systems already in place, and they're using the banks of those to actually create those legal trails with designated trailheads to access that area. It's quite a lengthy area, so it's a really great way to connect down to Pima County. Pima County has the, oh, and those, that's, here are those trails, on the 90-mile segments of Canal Trail. There's a couple viewpoints of those, some trailheads. Ideally, once we have this nonprofit umbrella, we would have standard trailheads and trail signs and kiosks across the entire system. So from Douglas all the way up to Las Vegas, they would all mesh in with the individual trail systems that they had. Tucson is currently working on completing their Tribute Trail Loop. Currently, the red loop on the west side and south side, that's already constructed, and they have, I believe it's about 16 different segments going through the National Forest that they would like to finish up and connect down to the southeast, kind of popping right out at Kirchner Cavern State Park. These are just various segments in the flow of how they would move through the top half. You can see some of the different viewpoints. Lot of gorgeous scenery connecting from all these different areas. Suaro National Park. Okay. Now, this part is a little tricky, and hopefully, with some bigger key players involved, it might actually come to fruition this way, but I do have a contingency plan for the Pinal County would like to use the Rails-to-Trails, connecting through Vail down to Douglas. This has not been a particularly easy feat because the railroad is very difficult to work with, and we have not yet been able to secure that, even with federal mandate to do those Rails-to-Trails. So really, it just comes down to whether we can get it to work or not. If it doesn't work, I do have that kind of exercise where I went through and went down through, here are those potential options. I wanted to make sure we had many, so there's four options there, going through Green Valley, connecting through Patagonia. And I really worked hard to make sure that these trails were connecting points of interest, vista views, lakes, cities that maybe didn't otherwise get a whole lot of attention through tourism. So we're definitely hooking into the tourism aspect, we're hooking into the economic aspect, trying to get this idea that if we could create something similar to the Appalachia Trail or the PCT that goes all the way through the center here, you know, it could really make these towns, not just small little towns, but trail towns, Trail Town USA, similar to that. And the idea would be that, you know, you're bringing that economy aspect into these little cities. Okay, so I think I was a little fast, but that's the Sun Corridor Trail in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one. Did you, I might have missed it in the slides. Did you tell us about how long the total trail will be? I know that there's a lot of options, but do you have an idea somewhere around?
Because it's solo-concept, you know, with that last, you know, it could add on an extra 100 miles or two. I think over, I think it was over 1,500 total. But that included the loops, so it wasn't the straight-throughs, it was all of the loops, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great project. Thank you for giving us this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
On the nonprofit, that would be the operator of the trail, is that correct?
Ideally, yes.
And would that be comprised of the stakeholders that are, that are kind of having the IGAs connecting the geographic areas to the trail?
Right.
Or is that an independent?
The nonprofit, I believe, because it's still concept and we haven't really fleshed it out yet, but ideally, I think that the nonprofit would be kind of the sole operator of the project. All the funding would go through them, all of the consistencies, such as trail planning and the volunteer program, all of that would go through them. The stakeholders would still be involved, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be...
The operations.
Be, yeah, part of the operations. Because they all have to really, it's not one group of people that is creating this trail. We're creating the idea, but really what we want is for each community to take ownership of their trails and their loops and their systems, and say, hey, this trail is coming down through the proximity of our city, how can we connect to it? So, because there's no, there's not a set pot of funding to create this huge cross-statewide trail. So that is kind of where we've started with that.
Thank you. And I just have one more question, and maybe Mr. Mearsman is going to answer this, but the status of our trails in Kingman, are we, the ones that we are working on and developing, are they fitting into this model, so, as you've designed it so far? And also the county.
So I think he's going to speak to that in his trails. I had proposed a few that went through the Walupi, but they're concept. So if each trail department for each city is working through their trails, and they see what I've done, and they're, you know, ah, we really, we think it would be better over here. If they can make that connection and they can continue the flow, then it's absolutely fine for them to choose whatever works best for the community. It's really tough because not one shoe fits all or each community. So it really needs to be something that they take ownership of and design so that it fits the citizens of the community and so that it meets their needs, both recreation and transportation. Because it can be that alternative. You can use a bike, you can hike, you can horseback ride through it if you're going from point A to point B. It's not designed for OHV use, but from what I'm hearing is that there is another trail altogether that essentially would do the same thing, but for OHVers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much for taking the time to drive up here and give us this presentation. Appreciate it.
It was a lovely drive. And absolutely, if any of you would like to participate in our meeting at the end of October, feel free to contact Mike, and I'll make sure that you get the invite sent to you. So it is out, it's in Maricopa. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item two, White Cliffs Trail Update.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you very much. Okay, I will talk about the White Cliffs Trail, and I'll try to tie in the question that Vice Mayor Miles had. But the picture in front of you is the White Cliffs Wagon Wheels Trail, and the White Cliffs Upper Trail, which is what we're going to talk mostly about, is a 1.5-mile trail that will traverse to the top of a bluff that overlooks the city of Kingman, the golf course, beautiful views of the Walupi Mountains. And it was developed by, the plan was drawn up by the Crata members, the Colorado River Trail Alliance Group. They're an EMBI-affiliated organization, they have over 50 members. They do 1,000 hours of volunteer annually. One of the gentlemen, Ed Mann, he's got over, almost 1,000 hours himself on trails in his lifetime around here, so he's one of them that, so it's amazing, what all he's done. Obviously, they have great events, the annual Rattler Race that's coming up, and they've constructed over 38 miles of trails. The history of this trail is Public Works employees, Rob Owen was instrumental in this, and Burley Hemrick were instrumental in applying for a grant through state parks and trails, and they received a partial grant of $13,530. The cost estimate of the trail was provided by the Arizona Conservation Experience, and BLM had agreed to do the archaeological survey that's required for this, but we just found out that their archaeologist is relocating to a different area, so that may be another expense that we have to take on. The estimated cost of the project was $54,000. And this is a breakdown of the budget. They had $13,700 budgeted already, and then with the partial grant, they went to council to get additional funding, and they ended up, this council is generous, and ended up approving $45,000 more. So we're in the neighborhood of $20,000 above what we really need, but there's, you'll see that there's other expenses that we're going to have, including the archaeological study. But currently, this project is in ADOT. It takes ADOT approval to go on, so, and that can take some time to get that approval finished. I went up with Rob Owen to review the, and Burley to review the site, and they showed me what all they had done with it. And we also, I went up there with Matt Driscoll from BLM, and Ed Mann, who I was just talking about from the Colorado River Trail Alliance. And we looked at the whole project, and one of the additional costs, obviously, this bridge is there, and it's going to need some work to repair that. Or what I had talked about originally was try to maybe install a bridge similar to the one we have at the golf course that we've made. It's made of rock, and it looks real natural, and I think it'd be a good fit there. But this may, this bridge may have some historical value, too, so we may end up having to leave this there as well. There's going to be signage that's going to be expensive, kiosks, message centers, all those type of things are very expensive for a project like this. So that's where the extra $20,000 that we're talking about will get eaten up pretty quickly, I think. So something else we talked about with Ed and Matt Driscoll was the possibility of not utilizing the White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail solely to get up there because it's steep and it's got, when you're messing with a historic site like that, it's pretty concerning. So we've looked at, in building a lower trail there. And the positive thing about this lower trail would be, it'd only be about 900 feet long, and it would kind of go down along beside the White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail. Here's a picture of it. Where it would go, you see the White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail there, and it would go off to the side a little bit and traverse up and be more of a gradual slope for bikers and hikers. And we're going to start right now by cleaning up the White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail and getting that so it's more usable as it is. We've got Boy Scout troops that have offered to do some work on the project. We've had church groups that we've talked to about doing some work. The Venture Club's expressed interest in helping us out with it. We'll do some of the work with inmate labor. And the lower loop that we're talking about, and another positive thing about this lower trail is, a lot of it can be done with mechanical equipment. The upper trail that we're talking about, it's all going to have to be hand work, and that's why it's so expensive. It's going to be all hand-stacked rock, and they just get up in there with boulders, sledgehammers, and picks and go at it. But the lower trail that we're talking about, that would go out around the White Cliffs Wagon Wheels, would be, a lot of that would be able to be done with our mechanical equipment. Right now, we're going to start, like I said, by cleaning up the White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail, and there's washouts around there, some washouts that you can see there. But this is what the trail looks like, so there's a lot of, we're going to basically go in there and rearrange a lot of what's there. Take a lot of the large boulders and get them out of the area, and stack them along the side, and take the lower, the smaller boulders and place them in along the trail and put the finds over the top of that, just kind of get it so it's much more functional. If you look at some of these areas, you can see if you move a large boulder and place some of the smaller boulders around and then put the finds over the top, it'd really be a nice surface. Here's another example. That's the trail, and it can be cleaned up and really made to be a lot better going forward. There you see the trail, and there's another battle we're going to be fighting there is the graffiti that's there, and we're constantly working on that. We've had several church groups go in there and help us with that. But our thought is, too, if we can get people using this, when we get the bike trail up in there and get more activity there, the more activity you get, the less vandalism you'll end up having. So there's really a lot of positives to it. Here's another example of the, where I'm talking about rearranging the boulders and moving them. You can see that there's a lot of boulders that have washed down over time, and that's right in where the wagon wheel trail has deteriorated away. And so we'll just rearrange those boulders, move them, and stack the smaller ones in there and make it much more functional as it is. There's another example of moving some of the large boulders and then stacking the smaller ones. And we'll even clean up, here's more large boulders along the left, and we'll clean out the wagon wheel area, and that, because the rocks in there and everything help deteriorate the trail itself as well. So we're going to just start out by going in and cleaning this up and getting it so it's much more usable. There's more example of moving the big boulders. This is from the top looking down. Why are trails important? Wire trail's important. Connectivity from uptown to downtown Kingman, I think it'd be great to have that. And that's to answer your question about trying to tie these trails together. What my goal is, is to try to get our trails so they end up having to go through downtown. Make it so people can get to our downtown from the existing trails that are out there. I would really like to see Fort Beal, obviously is a great trail if any of you have hiked that or biked it, that's a great trail. It'd be nice to be able to tie that to this trail. I talked about Ed Mann, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but he's a pretty amazing guy. He's the only person that I've ever heard of that has ridden his bike all around Fort Beal without walking in an area. And if you've hiked that or biked it, you can appreciate the fact that it's pretty impressive. So, but that, that would be a great, if we can tie these trails together. So obviously it preserves the open space around Kingman, natural and cultural resource preservation, quality of life opportunities, education programs, historic and cultural programs. We're even going to start utilizing that trail for our summer camp that we have for the kids. Take them up there and explain to them how those trails got there. I just think it's a great, and then the afternoon, we'll take them down to the Grand View Pool to go swimming. So I think it can be a great opportunity there for, for people to learn about our community and how Kingman got where it is. So obviously health and wellness programs, physical health and mental health. And with our climate in Kingman, it's year-round recreation opportunity. There's a lot of places where it's too hot to go on the trails in the summer and it's too cold in the winter, but we have such a good climate here that it can be utilized a lot more. So it's a great opportunity, I think. And I mentioned about the Rattler Race and the Chilling on Monolith, Monolith Gardens is another great trail. And if we could somehow get these trails to all, join in and end up where they can get to downtown, I think it would just be a huge boost for our economy in Kingman. So also another great thing about trails is getting businesses to come to our town and recruitment, that's a great asset. I mean, doctors, lawyers, they, they like to, they exercise and if we want doctors in our hospitals and business, to come to our business park at the airport, these are all great assets for our community. Like I say, I think it's a very important for the future of the economy of the city of Kingman. And I think Josh is going to talk a little more about this later, I believe, in his presentation. But I think that's about all I have regarding that and I'd be happy to answer any questions or if anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much.
I hope I answered your question.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions upstairs?
I have a question. Just one quick question. Do you think that any of this could be wheelchair accessible?
It's funny that you say that. That's what I started out thinking about replacing the bridge with a larger bridge, just to make it so, I would like to see it so they could be handicap accessible over to see the, the White Cliffs, where the wagon wheels came down. I think, but when you're talking about, and Matt Driscoll and Ed Mann kind of steered me away from trying to get the handicap accessibility over to there because when you're messing with the historic area, there's a lot of challenges to that. So if we can make this lower trail that we're talking about where it's handicap accessible so where they can get in there and see the trails, I think it'd be really cool to do that. So that would require us building another bridge like I'm talking about, that's at the golf course, which we could do that and it's really turned out nice. The bridge at the golf course is great and I think it would be a nice fit there. So that's still part of what we'd like to do. I think it'd be great to be able, for as many people as possible can get there and see that. Cause when I first came to Kingman, that was one of the pretty cool things to see that. I thought it was pretty neat and when we get guests from out of town, we go show them the wagon wheels because it's a pretty neat history for our area, so.
It is. Okay, so you're still looking at it or trying to?
Yeah, we're going to try to do that though.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think so too. So that's our, what we're striving to do. You know, if we can, if we have enough funding to do all that, that would be what it boils down to right now.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mike, I've got a question for you. So is the ultimate goal to focus on creating a Kingman Loop and then signing an IGA and, bringing that loop into the Sun Corridor Trail System? Is that what we're trying to do here?
Well, really the Sun Corridor Trail to me is more of a county, the counties are mostly involved in that and I'm hoping that our county will, I know they go to the meetings and they attend a lot of the same talks that I go to about this and I think they, they're interested in doing that too, is, because a lot of it's more out in the county than it is in the city. But that's our goal is to get it so they will loop through our city. The Sun Corridor Trail, a spur off of it will come.
Yeah. I looked at her presentation, I think it was segment 22 or something like that where it came through Kingman and we were going to be responsible for a loop and I think that'd be great. And it would become a part of several loops throughout the state, which I think that's, that's a great idea. And I think it's a draw. I mean, livability, definitely. So it's good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Item three, capital budget process.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Tina and I have been working on capital budgeting and kind of looking at the history, what it's, what we've done in the past on capital projects and budgeting for those capital projects and then putting together a plan for what does budgeting and especially capital project budgeting look like as we move forward so that we're making sure to get input from all the stakeholders in the city. Comments have been made about livability and of course, capital projects are a big part of our livability. And so Tina's been gracious enough to put a presentation together for us and she's going to walk you through kind of a history and where we, where we're planning to go.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight's agenda item is the capital budget process and we're going to talk about what a capital budget is, what our current process is, and then where we're going with that process. So some of the proposed changes for this upcoming capital budget process. So a capital budget really are the financial plans for our capital improvements, our facilities and our equipment. Now, how do we determine the capital projects that are going to be considered as part of that capital budget? And there are three criteria for those capital projects. One is that the annual aggregate cost must be $50,000 or more for that project. It also must have a useful life of three years or greater and then it must meet one of the following items. And that is, is it increasing revenues? Is it reducing operating expenditures? Is it improving efficiencies in any of our services? Is it contributing to the quality of life? Are we protecting the health and safety of our employees or of our community? Or are we preserving a capital investment that's already been made to the city? That's the type of projects that are considered to be part of the capital budget. However, probably one of the very largest pieces of a capital budget is the funding piece. And so we can put as, we can consider as many projects as we want, but without that funding source or any sort of dedicated revenue sources, we can't really put together a capital budget. So historically and even looking at this year, the capital, the city's capital improvement projects are mostly funded with cash reserves, with debt, by issuing debt or grants. And, and until this year, so pre fiscal year 19, we had very little dedicated revenue sources for our capital budget and for our capital projects. As a matter of fact, we do have dedicated revenue streams in our water and wastewater funds. However, they are minimal and they don't fund our entire water and wastewater capital needs. We also have for those other general capital projects, projects such as parks and recreation, street capital projects. So not looking at pavement preservation, because that's O and M, but actual street capital projects such as our Eastern Street Improvement Project, public safety, and then other facilities and equipment, computer software throughout the city or some sort of facility remodel or, or just a facility improvement in general. Those all are what we consider our general capital projects. And again, up until fiscal year 19, we had one dedicated revenue stream for those projects, which was our 2% room tax. This year, we're expected to collect about $540,000 from that, from that room tax. So when you think about all those other general capital projects and we're collecting $540,000 a year to fund them. So in fiscal year 19, however, the adopted budget includes two new dedicated revenue streams for those general capital projects. That is construction sales tax. All of the construction TPT that we earn this year will be dedicated towards funding capital projects, not just this year, but going forward, as well as a half percent capital project TPT that was approved by the council last year. And that also is going to fund the general capital projects. That's almost $4 million that is dedicated to general capital projects this year, additional revenue for that. So how has our capital budget developed? Well, we identify councils' priorities and we do that through work sessions or through conducting surveys. We also identify staff's priorities and we do that through priority-based criteria. In your agenda packets, you did see the worksheet or it was provided anyhow, the worksheet that staff uses when they put together their capital improvement projects. And then of course, we have to identify our funding sources and we do that through our financial forecasting. The timetable currently for our capital budget process starts in December or January. And then from December, January to about February is kind of like the meat and potatoes of the capital budget process. And then in May, we bring, city manager recommends those capital projects and then you make revisions, maybe add projects, change the scope of certain projects and then you recommend or approve our budget with the capital projects approved as well. So identifying funding sources, huge piece of our capital budget. So for fiscal year 19, these are the capital budget funding sources that are being used to fund our capital projects. So again, cash reserves, almost 60% is being funded through cash reserves. Debt, almost 14%, four and a half million. And then you'll see our third funding source are those TPT revenues, so those additional revenue streams, $3.3 million. So if that $3.3 million were to go away, we have to think about what are we going to do? What are our alternatives? So one is that we can replace those revenues with something else. Two is you can say, you know what, we still need to fund those capital projects, very important, we can't defer any longer. We're going to go ahead and cut services, reduce our operating budget, use the monies from that budget to cover the difference in our capital budget. Or you may say, you know what, we can't do that, so we're just going to defer our capital projects, revert back to what we used to do and continue to use cash reserves. But at some point, those cash reserves will be depleted. So let's look at the fiscal year 19, the selected list of the funded capital projects that you approved as part of this budget. Now, this is just a selected list, it's just 12 of them, but I thought I would just provide a few of them and the funding sources that we used to, to pay for them. We've got our fuel station and that's done through cash transfers throughout all of the departments who have city vehicles. So we're all contributing to that particular fuel station project. Our park site acquisition project is going to be paid with development investment fees. Those are monies that were collected years ago that we've been waiting to spend and we actually have a project to spend this year those on. So those monies are, those monies are being used for the park site. Playground equipment, you approved playground equipment this year for multiple, for multiple playgrounds. We know that our sidewalk improvements on Andy Devine are being funded with a CDBG grant of almost a million dollars. Fire engine replacement is through that bed tax or that room tax. Fire Station 2 is with debt proceeds. We're doing some improvements to our police department's building lobby and that's also through the room tax. Then we have our I-11 East Kingman Connection Project. We've got our program manager, we've got some design that we're paying for, just over $2 million. Couple of water projects, some of those are being funded with system revenues, but most of them, most of these two projects are being funded with cash reserves. And then we have a couple of wastewater projects as well, our downtown sewer outfall line and our reclaimed water injection project. And those also system revenues, but primarily cash reserves. So hits and misses, meaning what are we doing good throughout our capital budget process and what are we not doing so well at? So hits, well, we definitely need to be using priority-based criteria and we are. Staff is using priority-based criteria when selecting capital improvement projects. Council work sessions and surveys, we are too, getting your input and what your priorities are, most importantly. Financial forecasting, not just the monies that we have today, but looking out five years, where are we going to be in five years? And dedicated revenue streams. So prior to this year, I would probably put dedicated revenue streams as a miss, but we were, you approved two new dedicated revenue streams this year, totally over $4 million. So I would say those are hits this year. Where are we missing? Well, long-term strategic plan, we don't have a long-term strategic plan. We also don't get the public input on our capital budget process. And better communication throughout the year, not just with staff and council, staff and the public, but staff between departments as well. The timetable that we have, so right now we do December to February for that capital budget, meat and potatoes process. And it's a very big part of our budget, a very important part of our budget and we really need to dedicate more time to that as well. And then council and staff priority alignment, staff comes up with their priorities, council comes up with theirs. And then in May, when you look at the projects that are being recommended, you say, well, where did this project come from? Or we say, where did that project come from? And there's not really that alignment. So those are our misses. So what are we going to do different in fiscal year 20 for this upcoming capital budget process? Well, first thing is, we're going to conduct a citizen survey. And Mr. Foggan and I have already begun working on that and we're hoping that by late September, October, that survey will be distributed to a random group of people within our city. So first thing, we're also going to expand our timetable. It's not going to be just a three-month crunch time in developing the capital budget. We're going to add a couple of months on to that. Better communication, well, certainly with the public by getting their input, but also as you'll see further on, with you as a council and staff and with staff each other as well. So we're going to hold a council retreat this year. And the council retreat is going to not just be a work session where it's council and a couple of staff members. We're going to do a council retreat where it's the council as well as all of the senior leadership, leadership team, city manager, and we're going to talk about priorities, we're going to talk about challenges and opportunities, performance measures, fiscal year objectives, all of the things that go into developing the priorities for our projects. And then when we talk about your priorities, we don't want to just talk about your priorities. We want to know, are they short-term, midterm, long-term priorities? Where do they fall? Where do they lie within those ranges? And then all, and just all of us being at the table when we talk about these projects. So I talked about a council retreat. It's going to be almost a day, day, day retreat. So what are we going to do during that day? Well, the very first thing that we need to do is we need to know where we stand financially. So we're going to look at this year's budget to actual comparisons. Are we missing them? Are we hitting them? What does that look like for the next five years? So we're going to review that five-year financial forecast as well. The most important piece in developing a capital budget is to know where we stand financially. We'll discuss the citizen survey results, those will have been presented to us by then. We're going to discuss staff's challenges, opportunities, performance measures, and then last but certainly not least is for you then to hear everything and then put together your priorities and determine again the range on those. So then in looking at our capital budget timeline, you'll see that we're starting it now, September, October, and we're going to end the capital budget meat and potatoes process in February like normal. It's just going to have some different timetables in there. We're still going to then, the city manager will identify any sort of projects, facing them on priorities or evaluating them on priorities, recommending them to you in the May budget work sessions, but we will all be on the same page by then. And, and so this is our, this is our proposal for fiscal year 20. And I think with that, we will certainly take any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions?
I had some questions.
Sure.
Thank you for that presentation. It was very informative. I do have just a few questions. So clearly the old way was not sustainable. You just can't deplete all of the city's cash reserves. So my question would be, what percentage of the adopted CIP prior to the current fiscal year was unfunded?
I had a feeling you were going to ask that question and I don't have those percentages off the top of my head, but I, in looking back historically, even the last 10 years, water and wastewater seemed to be the largest contributor to those projects and even looking, or to our total projects, and even looking at those projects, they were a very small piece that were funded as well. So I would certainly say, I, I don't want to give you a percentage, I don't know what that percentage is, but I know it's a very low number.
No, and my, I went through and looked all of it and a lot of the funding that was, it looked to be included was assumptions as well, not only just not being, you know, wholly unfunded, but we were assuming this agency was going to give this much money, assuming this agency was going to give this much money. And, and by my unofficial just look at it, it was like over 60- over 60% of the CIP, the five-year CIP was unfunded. So that'd be interesting to know someday down the road. My other question would be, what types of projects, just so the citizens understand, what types of projects are included on the adopted CIP? Parks, new sports fields, right, soccer fields? What about new parks in general?
New parks in general, community centers.
What about new fire station on the east bench to reduce public safety response times? Is that included?
Correct.
What about reconstructing Eastern from Pasadena to Airway? Is that included?
It is.
Okay. What about widening Stockton Hill from Detroit to Airway? Would that be a project that would be included in the CIP?
Correct.
Okay. My next question would be, have you heard, I've heard in the community, from some people, that something about mystery projects or nebulous projects on the CIP. Have you heard of any of those projects? I mean, is there any possible way? I mean, because my understanding of the CIP is that there are no such mystery projects, that each individual capital improvement project must go through the official process before it's placed onto the adopted CIP, and then it has to be adopted and included in the five-year CIP, and then and only then would it be a potential, or qualifying for potential funding. Is that right? You just can't have a mystery or a nebulous project come up and the city's going to fund it. That's just not how it works, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. My last question would be, the citizen, I have two questions, citizen participation survey for fiscal year 1920, that's going to be available online? Is it going to be maybe for everybody to fill out if they want?
So I believe, Mr. Foggan.
I'll take this. So there will be, to make sure that we're getting statistically significant results, it will be a mailed survey to a random group of people within the community.
Okay.
So that piece will be statistically significant, all those results. The folks that we're working with will also make that same survey available online for anybody to take. But when we present findings from it, we will present only, we will not present the facts of the survey from the online. We will provide the information gathered online, but the fact portion of it will be the only, the mailed-in surveys. So there will be two surveys, but to have it based statistically, it will be only the randomly generated ones.
Great, appreciate it. My last question for you, Tina, I believe on June 5th of this year, this council adopted resolution number 1867, right, which I think it required a 6-7 supermajority vote to rededicate the dedicated funding that goes to the city's CIP, and also for the dedicated pavement preservation. Is that correct?
Any sort of rededication of that?
And then my last question is, I know that you did a really nice-looking brochure for the half cent or the half percentage that's dedicated to the streets, and it's my understanding that you're going to do one for the half cent dedicated to the CIP?
It's this close.
Yeah. I think it's really important, because there's a group out there, in case people don't know, that in November, they've put an initiative on the ballot, and they want to strip away the city's ability to conduct business and fund things properly. So we need to make sure that objectively, that people are educated on what's true and what's not true. And what's the story on that brochure?
Yeah, the brochure, the street one, as you mentioned, is out and on counters and available on the website. The CIP brochure, Tina and I just recently reviewed it. We're making some changes to the graphs, just to make sure that it's, they're easy to read. There was a little bit more text that we wanted to add. We hope to have it to the printer this week, and as soon as we have a final draft, it'll be on the website. And then the brochures, the hard copy brochures will be available shortly after that.
I appreciate it. I can't thank you guys enough for that. It's so important that people go to the polls educated on the facts.
Agreed.
There's a lot on the line, so thank you very much.
And just one follow-up, counselor, to the question about nebulous capital projects. So on the five-year capital improvement projects, they're very firm. Now, when we start talking about long-range capital, that, if there's anything squishy, if you will, it would be a project that's 10 years from now, that's been discussed or planned for, that wouldn't be on the five-year capital improvement plan. But even those, we try to make sure have solid information behind them, and that we're keeping them on the horizon, so that we get them on the five-year capital plan when it's the appropriate time. But yeah, capital budgeting is not one of those things where you just kind of guess. Departments spend many, many hours researching these projects, working with consultants, making sure that we're capturing as close as we can. It's hard when you're looking at a project that's five years out to know what it's going to cost. So if there's anything that's kind of squishy, it's cost, but the project itself is just generally solid. Other than, like I said, if there's something that we're talking about that's 10, 15 years out, I've seen things on capital projects like, we need a new recreation center, and the community clearly can't afford it, but they want it to be known, and so they'll have it in the narrative. It won't be obviously in the five-year capital plan, but it's in the narrative somewhere where it's talked about long range, we would like to have a community center 20 years from now.
Sure.
That, as far as the five-year plan, I've been through it, and everything has got backup to it, and is clearly well thought out and researched.
Yeah. Well, the city is, I think, is growing up, and we're becoming more sophisticated as time goes on, as far as how we approach these projects. And if I understood the presentation correctly, this citizen's participation, these new things that we're going to be doing starting next, well, this month, maybe next month, and that annual process is going to become even more sophisticated, and it's not just a one-time thing, it's going to be every year. And that's how really, I mean, a CIP is a living document. It's going to be changing with the community, and whatever the community values, as far as short-term, midterm, and long-term, right, that's what it's going to go in.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. You had a question first?
I do, thank you. Is there discussions underway to review contingency plans in the event that the voters overturn the TPT increase in November?
The answer to that is yes. But that will be done with the council and the senior leadership team when that happens.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I wanted to refer back to your pie chart for the budget funding sources.
Sure.
You know, I've also heard in the community that, well, you have a lot of money sitting there to use. And if I look at that cash reserves, it looks like a nice slice of the pie. But that's not really all available, is it? I mean, don't we have to maintain a reserve, a certain percentage of cash reserves in order to maintain our fiscal stability for the city?
So those cash reserves are actually the cash reserves that we are using this fiscal year that are for funded projects. We have more cash than that for that purpose that you're stating, Vice Mayor Miles, for those requirements. That $18 million is primarily in the water and wastewater fund right now. There is very little in our general capital projects fund. So most of that money are monies that we have maybe been saving for particular projects, such as the automated meter reading project, things of that nature that are very costly. So we sit on the money for a few years until we're ready to actually fund a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the clarification. And two other things. One, I just wanted to point out that when I was reading page three, and it had to meet one of the following criteria, preserve a precious capital investment. I think that was previous, but I think they're precious too. Maybe it is precious.
I look at it as precious, I actually think of the wastewater treatment plants as a very precious capital investment.
And then the last thing I wanted to ask was, we're having dialogue with Chabon on our economic development strategic plan. Will any of that input factor into this year's process?
The answer is yes. That is all combined to help the council and senior leadership team make those decisions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
I think it was last year that we had a consultant come and go over their findings about our underground infrastructure. And I think the number was some more over $70 million in improvements that needed to happen to our water lines. There's a lot of red lines and, you know, big investments that needed to be made. I'm wondering, how do we go from that consultant's presentation to getting something in the capital budget? Is it one big project? Is it 10? And are any of those projects already in the capital list?
So, great question. That's actually part of that water rate study that we have been going through. And all, many of the findings, not all of them, but many of the findings from that consultant's report will be included in future. And some of them are included in this year's as well. But many of them are going to be funded in future projects, depending on the water rate increase, which is still on the table. We're moving forward with that.
Okay. Any of the 18 million, did any of that take a bite out of the 70 million in needed improvement?
I'm going to say very little.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council member, you're welcome. Did you have a question?
A brief, a quick question, yes. In February of this year, council held a community town hall meeting in order to receive the communities or the public's thoughts on the TPT and the half percent that the council voted in, or the 1% total that the council voted on August 15th of last year. The comments there were overwhelmingly in support of what council did. I was just wondering, in addition to the survey that is proposed by staff, what councils and staff's thoughts as far as holding a similar town hall meeting for the public or community to supply input as far as how they would like to see that half percent invested, what community improvement projects. So the council, or so the public could come and address council directly rather than lieu of just, or in addition to the proposed survey?
So I'll speak, and if you want to jump in, Mr. Foggan. So Mr. Foggan and I actually sat down and talked about how to reach the community the best. And we've had experience in many different formats in holding some sort of budget town hall meetings, and it's been not well-attended, actually. So we felt that the, using national citizen survey was the best way to get results and maybe information from the community. Did I, so that's the direction that we plan to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Council member Lincolnfelter?
Just to follow up on that to Mr. Foggan, there may be a great opportunity to use our new public relations individual for education.
And I've talked to her about that, so she's planning on it.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Final item on the work session is an update on economic development.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Kellogg, and I believe he brought his entourage, is going to just give you a brief update on what they've been working on and where they hope to head over the next couple of months. So, Gary?
Mayor, city council, Mr. Foggan. First of all, I'd just like to say, you know, you don't take this journey by yourself. So in the audience, I've got Josh in tourism, I've got Sylvia and Rich in planners, and Bill Schilling couldn't be here tonight in community development. So these are the guys and gals that are behind the team that really helped it all happen. Also, I'd like to take a moment just to acknowledge Joe Husband. Joe jumped in when we first took over the airport, and he's done nothing short of a fantastic job of bringing us up to speed and preparing everything now for this week, when we actually will do the interviews for the new person coming onboard for the airport. But I'd also like to take a minute, because Friday will be his last day, and that is to thank Bill DiGiulio. I don't think Bill came tonight. He says, you know, a modest fellow. But Bill jumped in as soon as we found out that, kind of where things were going, with Jim Bacon. And I called Bill and pulled him out of retirement, and the same thing, when he was able to fill in when Joe wasn't there, and just keep things rolling between the business park and the airport. So again, a big thank you. And the other introduction that I want to make this evening is Bennett Bradley. Bennett is now in his second week with us. Bennett joined us from Mojave County. He was the economic planner, or economic development person there. He worked with the county for almost nine years. I was really glad. The first thing I did when I came to Kingman in February was to call Bennett up and just kind of re-go over our relationship and everything, and things we'd worked on together through the years, and just kind of planted the seed that if something changed at the county, for the love of God, let's talk. And so things began to take a little bit different shape at the county, and so Bennett and I began to talk more and more. And so I'm just really tickled that he's on the team. And a little later in my presentation, you will begin to see where his expertise is coming into play in some of the things that he'll be able to do for us. So with that, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about what happened since February. I got a call from Jim Bacon, and he said, I'd like to talk to you, Gary, about the possibility of coming onboard as a consultant to work in economic development. And I said, fine, and we had a meeting. And then he said, by the way, he said, planning and zoning will also be under your department. And he says, they have some environment issues and customer needs a little bit of help in their office area and some other things. And I said, okay, Jim, we'll certainly address that. He also said, by the way, he said, there's a fellow named Josh in tourism, and I'd like to put the tourism under you. And I said, okay. And about a month later, he said, we'd also like to see you work with the downtown folks to see if we can take these diverse groups and bring them together, because they all have the same wish, and that is to make Kingman a better place, and certainly to help bring the downtown to its full potential. So that was kind of how things got started. We addressed the remodel first in planning and zoning. We did a phase one, as many of you have seen it, and that is we remodeled the offices. We did that with the aspect of using the latest and greatest technology, thanks to IT and Joe and his group, and thanks to Public Works for the work that they did and the physical changes to the office. So we introduced the new technology, but we honored the history of Kingman by using photographs when folks come in that makes them comfortable, that they can talk a little bit about the history. And we've seen that in many situations now, where clients would come in, and just by the sheer fact of looking at the photos, we see them settle, you know, and we begin to address that. Phase two of that will start later on this fall, and that is in the area back where the planners and the community development are. That's actually where Sylvia and Rich and Bill are located. That's original carpeting from, we believe, when the building was first built. And so there's not much more that we can do with duct tape to repair that. Some painting and some adequate lighting, which I think will help create a better environment for them. The one thing I certainly see in planning and zoning is it takes a lot of time and a quiet place and a lot of research. And so they, I think we owe it to them, and we also owe it to our customers, the citizens of Kingman, to have an environment that works well. What has P&amp;Z been doing? Well, they took on a number of things. They've tackled tiny homes, cargo containers, off-street parking and RV parking, along with the new county court building, all this while just doing the day-to-day P&amp;Z activities. And one of the things now is, we kind of split things up in P&amp;Z, and Rich will take something, and Sylvia will take something. And right now, Sylvia is working on the RFP, as we mentioned a few months ago, to really begin to look at this last 47 years where we haven't done anything to update our P&amp;Z regulations. And so we are making really sure that we have a very good RFP, because this will not be an easy process, nor will it be cheap. I think that we had talked before that this could very well go in the range of $200,000 to $250,000 to bring us up to speed. And so we're doing that right now. We're getting everything ready so that we can hit the ground running on the 19 and 20 budget. So we've really paid a lot of attention to that. We've also opened it up to a lot more public input. We had a tiny homes workshop where people could just talk. They weren't governed by any regulations. And now I know we have another one coming up, and I believe Sylvia's taking care of one on the cargo containers. These are tough issues. Folks feel a little different on each side of the ledger here, but they kind of gets talked about and gets talked out at these sessions. Just a little bit of background, in '17, we had 171 permits for residential, and in so far, and then in '18, 193. Commercial, we had one in '17, and we already have seven in '18. Just as a way of backgrounds, we've got Dunkin' Donuts coming, we've got the human bean, U-Haul Storage, we've got Jersey Mike's, makes a pretty good sandwich, by the way, KMRC with a cath lab, one-hour air conditioning that we had a dedication for. That's a wonderful facility to come to Kingman. Planet Fitness, and above all Dairy Queen. So we'll have those things going. But those are the things that are certainly cooking on the But those are the things that are certainly cooking on, on the commercial side. So, on the tourism side, one of the things that I, when I met with Josh was, how could we improve that visitor experience? And so, one of the things we figured out right away was, we needed some major work on the cooling system. We have an evaporative cooling system there, which certainly can have its challenges. We got that fixed with the help of Public Works. We added some special sun shades to the windows without distracting from the historical value of the building or the look, and it helped, it did help, and so it, it made a little bit of difference. We began to look at the, the advertising. So, we revamped the advertising, marketing to focus more on the Kingman experience and a little less on the outside area attractions. They're there, we use them, but we, we turned and began to take our advertising to really look more at what was happening on the, on the Kingman side of things. Just to give you an example, and these are year-to-date figures, our, our sales at the visitor center have been 157,000 versus 96 same time a year ago today, okay? And the same thing on the visitors, 108,000 at the center versus 85. This, these are large percentage of increases, and one of the areas that, that really has jumped up is China used to rank fifth or sixth and way down the list. Now, they're number two, pushing right up against Canada for visitors. So, it helps us, because Josh keeps very detailed spreadsheets and stuff. That's certainly something that he and Bennett Bradley have in common. They are suckers for, not suckers, they are detail guys, okay? And they know how to use those spreadsheets. One of the things we did this year is, we sent Josh to, to the European Route 66 Festival along with Mr. Hinkley. And the idea was there is to see, should we invest more money? Where is this thing really all at? So, they came back and, and he and, and Mr. Hinkley will be putting a report together for us on just what is happening on the European side. And then, we're also working with, with Jim Hinkley to, to address some of the future events. But one of the things we've asked of Jim is, we will certainly be the sponsor in there, but come back and teach us. Teach us in, whether it be groups in, in the community, and certainly the staff, of what are other communities doing along Route 66, and what can, can we do better than we're doing today? So, one of the ways, two things that we're looking at is, is more ways to connect the powerhouse to the downtown. For many of us, we say it's an easy walk. For some tourists, it certainly isn't, but there's got to be some motivation to do that. So, those are, that's something that we're working on. The other thing is that just, how can we keep that visitor here a little bit longer with the experience? And so, one of the things there that we addressed, we had heard that, you know, how about canopies, some shade, things like that? Well, lo and behold, in 2008, you all had designed canopies. So, we managed to find this and dig it out, and I have an architect looking at it right now to say, is it still viable? Will it work? Will it not take away from the historical and the look of the building? And so, it, that's a very inexpensive process to go through, and maybe we can just keep folks down there a little bit longer and do some things like that. Also, you're going to see, we're working on to make sure that we stay ahead of this weed eradication around the place so that it always looks good. And certainly in next year's budget, one of the things we want to do is look at paving all the way around so it's easier for buses. Keep making that experience just better and better, so. Then came April. Jim Bacon then called me back into his office and sent, brought me up to speed on what may be happening between the city and KAA and the litigation on the airport. And he said, "I'd like you to oversee the transition and the operations of the airport and the industrial park." And that all became a reality on, on May 2nd. Until the transition, it was interesting, we only had a couple of inquiries on the economic development side. And even then, when you would talk with these folks, it kind of got a little hem-haw me because they didn't know who the players were going to be. Was it going to be the city? Was it going to be KAA? Who was going to come out at the end of this? And so, one of the things that began to happen was, is when we settled and we took over the airport, and I, I really, again, I can't say enough about all the city departments that jumped in to really make things begin to happen out there. About a month later, whether by coincidence or whatever, the phone began to ring, and a couple of the clients that had talked to us earlier said, "We're ready to talk." You know, maybe they wouldn't come out and say it, but the dust had begun to settle, okay? The city was in charge, we know where we stand. And so, to date, I can just tell you right now that Bennett and Bill and I are working on six different companies, okay? And four of these came as a result right within probably about a month after, after the, we got things settled. Same thing is somewhat taking place on the, on the airport side. Joe has been working now with a number of clients who are looking at shade structures, rather, one is a very large hangar and a couple of hangar things like that, some other companies that are looking for us that do things on the airport side of things. And so, thanks to, to our city attorney, we've been able to work through the process on leases and get those, that language converted from, from KAA to, to what we as a city need to, to function there. So, those are really positive. But again, I can't say enough about the, the guys that jumped in and helped with all of this. One of the things that, that we really have gone through the process with now is especially in the area with the FAA, and that was, number one, was the five-year capital plan, and this is done with the, with FAA and with ADOT. And they came up here, and we had a rather lengthy meeting. Joe helped guide us, some of us who were new to that process, through the process, and it was an extremely positive meeting. They liked what they saw, they liked the things that we did. We certainly raised the bar, and, and they liked that. And so, that meeting went extremely well. Again, like the city does in its capital budget, you need to get things in place. You need to put a marker in there that says, "Maybe we can't do this this year, but five years out from now, we'd like to do this, this, and this." So, that allows ADOT, which by the way, you guys, is good news, they now have some money, so that helps us a lot, too. And so, ADOT was really, really thrilled about the whole thing. And so, that, that meeting went well. And the other one is, is the 10-year, which you will address tonight, the approval of the, the 10-year master plan. And so, those are just a, a few of the things there. Now, I kind of come to one of the good things about certainly having Bennett onboard, there's a number of them, but we've now addressing the website. We're going to start to fine-tune. Bennett's expertise really comes into play here now. So, now we're dealing in single fact sheets. We're going to, we're designing single fact sheets for site selectors so that, boom, these are the guidelines, these are the rules that we follow. And so, having the time to do that and have the expertise that has done this really helps a great deal. We've also started the review and the information and the collection to develop a responsive and informative, data-driven ED website, okay? And so, again, I, my hat's off to, to Joe and his people. They've already started working well, and Bennett jumped in there, and so we, I think we can do some great things there. We also continue to work on potential industry sites, not just at the airport, but in and around Kingman. There are some things that were started certainly at the county level that, that affect us a great deal, because the jobs will come from, from the Kingman area. So, we're not the losing side of those, and I've asked Bennett to stay on top of it and, and certainly keep me in the loop there. We reconnected with the Arizona Commerce Authority. We also reestablished ourselves with the Arizona Economic Development Association, and so I've asked Bennett to follow up on that, make sure that we're on their mailing list and that we're getting that information. This week, we will start the interviews, and the meet and greet, as you all know, is on Thursday, to meet the two candidates for the, for the airport finalists. We've set up tours and everything, and then on Friday, we will actually go into the interview process and hopefully come out with the candidate that we're looking for. We started with 14, and by the time it all dwindled down, we had three, and one of them got a tremendous offer just before that, so he had to back away unfortunately, so. Again, I'm going to be working with Joe, and what we did now, like we were doing with Bennett, is I asked Bennett and I asked Bill DiGiulio to give me that length of time that they needed to transition. So, I want to tell you guys, we didn't just dump on Bennett. Bill has walked him through everything. We've prepared lists. We're making sure that everybody understands the procedures that are in place. And so, as of Friday, then Bill will be, be leaving us and going back into retirement. He made sure he told me that several times, and so. But one of the things that it's important is that we've looked and said, "All right, we know, we know somewhat how much property that we still have left at the airport. What can we do on the expansion piece?" And so, one of the things that I asked to Joe to look into was, what is the process beyond the 10-year plan for us to pick up the additional 1,600 acres? I will just tell you, it is extremely detailed. And so, we will, four of us, work together with the FAA folks, but it's, it's going to take some really keen planning to make sure. We have a lot of things to satisfy with them at the FAA, so. Then, a little bit of work has been done out there at the airport. Certainly, you're going to see a number of improvements over the next few months. We're getting ahead of the weed control issues. You've got a thing, you have an item on your agenda tonight for, for a special mowing device, improved road signage. We will also look at some, some, the signage is really helping. If you go about the airport right now, you're going to see that big sign that illuminates at night that was almost empty. Well, I got to tell you, we may have to in the next few months, we may have to add a couple of squares, so, which is, is really good. So, that's going well. Now, a little bit on the downtown work. Bill Schilling and I started, I think, a couple of weeks ago. We developed a little questionnaire, and so we've been trying to visit at least three or four businesses as, as the schedule allows us, and talk a little bit about needs, wants, how they're doing, you know, what things that we can improve on, and so we're going to continue to build on that. It, it's a lot like the B-3 surveys that are used in, on the industry side, only this will be in the downtown area. We've looked, also looked at some low-hanging fruit, and that is, what is the possibility of working with the downtown organizations to replace the benches and chairs, make them a little more custom to Kingman, and what we can do to recycle some of the older things that are there and use them in other places? So, we're going to continue to work with the groups downtown, to continue to try to encourage them to work together, because the potential is, is certainly there. Chabon Concepts was alluded to earlier, the ED Strategy Consultants will be here October 1st through the 5th. They've already talked to, I believe, almost all the council members, a number of community leaders, and so they will be a series of meetings, and they will also do a brief presentation to council while they're here to, to update on that. This week, we will also receive, are receiving now, the, the reports in, or the RFQs that we put out for the branding and marketing. And so, we will be going over those and, and looking at seeing which company really, really is going to fit that criteria. So, with that, that's where we are. There's some exciting things going on. I think it's going to get even more exciting as, as we get the, the right folks in place here and, and the, the team really starts to firm up, so. With that, I'll be certainly happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that very comprehensive report. Do we have questions of staff? Councilmember Lincolnfelter?
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. That was a really in-depth update, and I just want to say to Mr. Husband, thank you. I haven't met you yet personally, but, you know, thank you for, for coming and joining Kingman's team on an interim basis with everything that's happened this last year. I really personally appreciate it, and I want to welcome Bennett. You know, having that IEDC, those data standards for the site selectors, so they can do an apples-to-apples comparison with other communities, it's, that's so important, as is the, the data-rich website and available properties and sites, all that is so important to make us look like we're serious and, and we know what we're doing. Quantitative marketing, I know Bennett is also really strong in that, so.
Absolutely.
That's just such great news. You know, your whole, your whole department, it seems like when opportunities aren't knocking now, that you guys are out building doors, and that's really what we need to do, and you can see it, you know, clearly that commercially, or if it's at the airport, or if it's in the industrial park, that Kingman is open for business, and I just appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, please.
Mr. Kellogg, I want to thank you also, and Mr. Husband, and Bennett Bradley, for the tour that you gave last week of the airport and industrial park, because I've attended quite a few of the sessions of the, was the users' group, now the partners' group, and that tour also was informative, but you've, you've earned the respect of all of the users, all of the people who are there now, and those that are now seeking to come there, and I really appreciate that, and it just is so commendable, the difference that has been made in such a short time. And Mr. Husband, again, thank you for coming in and lending your expertise so that we are now in a position to hand it off with the FAA approval of the grant and so many, and the five-year plan, and so many things in place now. So, just thank you.
Yes, Councilman, I think one of the things that the Vice Mayor is that, you know, you, we talk about a draw site, but when you see it, now you, you understand what it really means and the challenges that are there, so, yeah. I thought that, that was, the tour was extremely enlightening in saying, you know, it, these little bumps on the ground, what do they mean, you know, so?
It was, and, but it was encouraging to me, because when we ask, will this, what will impact will this have when the actual extraction is done? And we were told that you're going to be able to work through it without closing off operations, because you can segment it. So, it was just very informative, and yes, the draw site is clearly evident when you, when you taxi around.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for your proposal.
Thank you.
It is 6:55. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. We'll reconvene the regular business meeting at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening. We'll call the regular council meeting to order. No need for roll call. If you would all kindly stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight will be given by Jason Lowry of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this beautiful evening. We're so grateful for the moisture that we've received today in this monsoon season. We're especially grateful for this free country that we live in, for the rights and freedoms that we enjoy. We're especially grateful for those men and women that have served and that serve our country and that protect our freedoms. We're grateful for this opportunity to meet. We pray that Thy Spirit will be here with the council this evening, that as decisions are made for our wonderful city, that they may have the power of discernment, that they may consider what's best for our community and us as citizens. We pray for a blessing upon our family members and friends that are not with us this evening. Bless them with safety. We pray that we will all leave this evening safely home. We love Thee, Father, and we pray for these things, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First item of business this evening is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of August 7, 2018. You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes. Any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two, call to the public comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. First signed up to speak this evening, Joni Millen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, staff, and of course, the community of Kingman. My name is Joni Millen, and I'm here this evening representing the Kingman Downtown Merchants Association. I have with me Marie Gonzalez. She is with United Way. She's the community contact. And then, of course, we have Mr. C., who's here representing the Clean City Commission. And we excitedly present, the Day of Caring is this Saturday. So, we're reaching out and looking for volunteers to join us. This is a citywide cleanup. We go from the bottom of Gasoline Alley or Coyote Pass, all the way through Andy Devine to Airway, and then, we go from up the hill of Walapie, all the way down Stockton Hill to Gordon. In the past, we've had up to 400 people out cleaning trash on one specific day, and that day is coming up this Saturday. It starts at 6:00 in the morning and ends at noon. So, we feed you. If you're interested, we would love to have the whole community out on the streets cleaning up. Hopefully, the rain will give us a little bit of a break, and we're able to get out there and do that. But go to the United Way website and sign up, sign the authorization, and we would love to see every one of you there. We've invited you with posters and flyers in front of you. And so, this is a great partnership that we've put together, and it's our fifth year. So, we're very excited.
Breakfast will be served till 9:00.
And breakfast will be served till 9:00, he says. Any questions for us? Anything else you guys want to say?
Nope, that's about it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Second to speak, Jem Morgan.
I have a feeling she's gonna trail down here after me, but I'm gonna give this a chance. Jem Morgan, I'm a Kingman resident. The first thing I wanna say is thank you to the City of Kingman. Today is National Red for Ed Solidarity Day. That's why I'm wearing red on a Tuesday instead of Wednesday. But this council has been so supportive of the Red for Ed movement, and I just wanna say thank you, because with the, you know, the pulling of the Invest in Ed Initiative, we're gonna need a lot more work. So, just thank you to the city. The second thing is, I caught the tail end of the trails update, and one of the things that I saw missing from the Why Trails Are Important, I saw an article recently, it was about the adventure tourism, and it brings to the state of Arizona, the adventure tourism revenue is $62 million every single day, every single day. I've been talking with Holly Irwin down in La Paz. She's a Board of Supervisor in La Paz. She's been trying to market the trails, the off-road trails. I just think that our whole district between Mojave and La Paz County, we could market that in such a powerful way that we could bring in that adventure tourism. So, anyway, that's just an economic piece that I think is missing a little bit. But the reason why I wanted to speak is, I know that we have had discussions about expansion of the city. I live in the Kingman area, but I'm just outside of the city boundaries. My life is affected by city decisions, but I have no voting power. The rates of the water that I use are determined by this council. Things like even the survey, you know, as a non-city resident.
Lay down.
We've been traveling all day. I'm so sorry. These are things that I don't get to participate in, even though I'm directly affected by them. And the one thing that Jamie brought up about those underground pipes issue, I live in one of the lesser affluent areas of Kingman that have some of the worst water pipes. The water pipes are eroding internally, and that's what we're drinking. And I understand that we need things like playground equipment and all of those other wonderful things that bring city development, but we're talking about people's lives, about our health. And in terms of prioritizing, I'm really asking this council to consider those underground pipes as a highest level of priority, because we are talking about human safety. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Stephen Robinson?
I'm Stephen Robinson, resident of Golden Valley. I'm also the Director of the Mojave County Republican Party District One, which encompasses what I call the inland empire of Mojave County, including the city of Kingman. I'm also an author of a very successful recall campaign. I believe in the rule of law, which is based upon the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Arizona. I'm saddened that I must speak to this council about the recent primary election. Please bear with me, as this will not be pleasant. At least one little good piece of news, there was over a 33% turnout overall and over 55% turnout in the Republican primary, which was the best in a long time. I've read what the city clerk has said about the write-in candidates and how much they -- how many votes they can need to have to be carried on to the general election. And I've also am writing about, I wanna talk about one candidate for office who basically deceived the voters by pulling out at the last minute. While campaigning, Ryan Dooley applied for and was hired for a position outside of Mojave County. By looking for two different positions, whether he intended to or not, he deceived the voters. He negatively impacted the city council elections by his actions. He should be ashamed or embarrassed of himself, and I think Councilman Waite, you are his brother-in-law, and so, you were familiar with this, and I think it's unfortunate that that was not presented. Second, the city's complete and erroneous misapplication of the laws regarding write-in candidates is essentially stealing the election from the voters. The statutes that you're using, based upon what I'm referencing, ARS 16-645, references partisan elections and having the minimum number of votes for partisan election. The statute that covers city elections is in Title IX, Chapter VII, Article III, which is about elections and voters. It clearly states without equivocation that the voters that get the four highest totals, like for two positions, twice as many positions that are available, four candidates, in this case, will go to the ballot. I'm gonna strongly encourage you to take a look at what you're doing and your interpretation of the law, because it violates the statute. And if I can read one thing in 20 seconds, this is 9-82101. Arizona courts have recognized that the Constitution of Arizona requires the legislature's involvement in issues relating to elections conducted by charter cities, including initiative and all this other stuff. The legislature finds that the conduct of elections described in this section is a matter of statewide concern. I'm gonna be encouraging the vote, the four candidates that finish first, to look at lawsuits if you proceed with this deal of not putting them on the ballot in general election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Any questions?
No questions, sir. Thank you. Dennis Lang?
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate everything you do to try to improve the city of Kingman. My name is Dennis Lang, and I'm a resident of Kingman. I'm also a active member of the Republican Party, just like Steve. I stayed at the election from 6:30 in the morning till 6:30 in the evening, and I asked the constituents, I stayed 75 feet away, I did it legally, and I asked the constituents, "Are you aware that there's a candidate on the ballot that is no longer running?" And almost every one of them, they said, "No." I mean, I probably influenced maybe, I don't know, 40, 50, 30, 40, 50 constituents to that fact, but they had no other idea of how to get that information. I tried to make them aware of the fact there are write-in candidates available, and I gave them some of their names, and I hope I had an influence on it. I met Mayor Gates there. I talked to her for about 20 minutes, very good discussion. I met Jen Miles' people. I've had very good conversations with them, and so, we had a pleasant experience. But the voters were uninformed, and I believe this is a travesty. These four people that were write-in candidates, I think, were disenfranchised, because that candidate that was on the ballot got more than 2,000 votes, which is ridiculous. I believe these four people should be put on the ballot, and I totally agree with Steve's interpretation of the law. So, I hope you will do something about it, and I hope you will correct it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We can't take questions, but thank you. I have one more person signed up to speak. Question for city attorney. Mr. Dick Meyer wishes to address the council prior to item 9A, which is executive session. Is it appropriate to do it then, or is it okay to do it then?
I think it's fine to either wait till then, or if he wants to just make a call.
Okay, if you wanna just wait, that's your desire to wait. Absolutely. I just wanna make sure that you had the opportunity to be heard this evening. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak to the council at this time. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. First item, next item, is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there any item on the consent agenda any council member wishes to have removed for discussion? Wow. Like, it's more than half an alphabet, and nothing's removed. Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no new business, no old business this evening. Moving on to first item of new business, it's a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 1874, amending various sections of the city of Kingman zoning ordinance to allow patio covers to be constructed within the front and rear setbacks. In residential zoning districts, the city of Kingman zoning ordinance does not allow patio covers to be built within the setbacks required by each zoning district. If approved, the proposed text amendment would allow patio covers to extend three feet into the front yard setback and extend five feet within the year setback. At the August 14, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 7-0 to recommend amending various sections of the zoning ordinance to amend various sections of the zoning ordinance to allow patio covers to be constructed within the rear and front setbacks. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1874.
Good evening. I have been forbidden from the PowerPoints from this point on.
Okay.
I'm just kidding. Actually, I'm just here if you have any questions for me regarding this text amendment.
Well, I guess I wanna ask, was there any public input?
We did have discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings a couple months in a row on that, so there was a chance for public input, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. It is now an action item. We're looking for approval of ordinance number 1874.
Make a motion to approve said ordinance as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding council support for the Kingman street drags. Staff is requesting that council reaffirm its support of the street drag event, as well as requiring the event to have a $5 million insurance policy. Council discretion.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just as we work on community events, some events come and go, and you hope that the good ones stay. And I've not been here for a very long time, but the time I've been here, I've heard about this event that was happening, and it happened a number of years in a row with, I think, increasing success, and that was the street drag event. And I've met with staff, I've met with street drag organizers. They are interested in having this event come back and be a big part of the Kingman event program. And so, tonight, what I wanted to do is just see, you know, the council at one time had re-upped or had agreed that this was an important event and wanted to make sure that it continued. Unfortunately, I believe the last street drag event was in 2011, and one of the things that the group ran into was the idea that the insurance that the city was requiring had gotten to a point where it just really couldn't be put on. And so, in meeting with the street drag people...
And so, in meeting with the street drag people, the organizers, as well as staff, we wanted to bring it back to the council, ask if the council still supported the event, the idea of the event, and if they would consider adopting or basically authorizing the insurance to be set at a $5 million max, with all the correct coverages needed for that type of event. So that's what I have for you. I know that a couple of the organizers came tonight to support this idea. I don't know if the council has questions for them, or if I've covered the subject well enough for you, but I'm definitely interested in making sure that events that benefit the community carry on. And this one seemed like it was very popular, and I think that the organizers have demonstrated that the event was well-attended, and that people still want to come to it. So with that, I'll leave it up to you to ask questions or to have discussion.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'm fine with this, as long as we're sure that, you know, we're not adding any exposure to the city. They'll be adequately covered, we'll be adequately covered.
Yep.
Okay, that's what my only thought.
So in visiting with staff, one of the questions that I ask, I like to understand what the real risk is. And so I kind of polled the staff that has been directly involved with the street drags over the years that it was held. And I like, I gave them one being no risk, 10 being the most extreme risk that you can imagine. And we were, you know, most of the responses were landing in the five, which I think is acceptable. I also think it's acceptable that we adopt the highest insurance requirements that one agency can give them. Once you go over that $5 million, you really can't put it together, because it requires multiple insurance agencies to try to work together. Those guys don't work together very well. So the max would be that $5 million.
Any other questions of staff? I don't see anyone objecting to this. I know that, as you said, it was very popular in the past.
All I'm looking for really is head nods on this, so if everybody's happy with it, we will continue to work with the street. We're going to shoot for next October for the street drag event. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you didn't feel any need to, it's all good, right? Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Consideration of Resolution 5172, designating September 15 through October 15, 2018, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Kingman. The City of Kingman is deeply rooted in its Hispanic heritage and the contributions it has given our community. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the accomplishments of Hispanic and Latino Americans who have helped shape our nation, and we are grateful for their many contributions Hispanic-American men and women make to our community. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5172. Mr. Foggan?
Yes, so, and a commitment to making sure that we are recognizing all the different cultures that are in our community. This was the first one that we had the opportunity to recognize. We're excited about this. In the future, I know that, in talking with staff, that we would encourage a community event around this resolution. I'm not aware of one this year. It came on us pretty quickly, but I know that Colleen has agreed to kind of help move this forward and get the word out, and we're pretty excited about it. And I think it can be a really neat event as we move forward over the years. So just would encourage the council, of course, we're recommending that you pass it.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Can we welcome Colleen Haynes to the staff? Welcome to the City of Kingman.
You're the mayor, you can do it.
Okay. Yeah, did you want to just come up and, sure, I would never put you on the spot. We just want you to say hello, and we're so happy you're here.
Hello. Thank you. I've had a great couple weeks here, and have a place to live, and the dogs are settling in, so looking forward to working with everyone, and especially community members. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Look forward to it as well. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll entertain.
I have a question. Just going back, so my only concern about this was just that I didn't want to see the city just pass a resolution and then not actually take any action to make it meaningful. So I'm happy to hear that we're going to work towards an event, but I'm wondering, for this upcoming, if we couldn't do something with social media to sort of highlight some of our historical figures, and give some more information, and maybe work with our schools a little bit?
You are right on point.
Okay, thank you.
And that's exactly what we've talked about, and we are looking to highlight some folks in our community that have contributed, or are currently contributing. And Colleen is actually gathering that information now, and we are interested in making sure that this information gets into our schools, so that we're providing the proper, I guess, I don't want to say education, or information to our students, that they know that these cultures exist in our community, and they're really important. And so, yeah, we are, and we hope to do what little we can this year. Obviously, we hope to do more in years to come, but that's exactly what we're going to do, is look to highlight some of those people in the next, over this month.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We're going to do like a series of little vignettes, if you will, celebrating people that have brought so much to our community, and that is one of the institutions we're reaching out to, are the schools as well.
Good, very good.
I definitely share your sentiment when it comes to that.
Okay, so it's now an action item. We recommend approval of Resolution Number 5172. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to adopt said resolution, designating the month Hispanic Heritage Month in Kingman.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Stanley second it, okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to department reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple, so I had written down the day of carrying. I think they covered it really well, so you're invited again. Also, I want to just make sure that everybody has on their calendar the meet and greet for the two candidates for the airport manager position. That will be Thursday. It will run, it's an open house, of course, so all are invited to come meet the two candidates. It's going to run from 4:30 to 7:00, and it will be at the airport in the conference room. Okay? Also, I want to make sure that everybody has on their calendar the Mojave County Fair, and the reason I'm bringing it up is that our Clean, the Clean City Commission will have a booth there, and the fair, I don't know if anybody knows this or not, but the fair's going to run longer hours. So if you have a little extra time, and you can volunteer, your help at the booth would be appreciated. I think it's running from 10 to 10 this year, so it's kind of a long shift for people. And that will be September 13 through the 16th. And then, one final note, I wanted to give you this news in person, it's actually kind of the bad news, is we were hoping to be online with our utility billing, of course, next week. And in conversations that the finance department had with our financial software folks, the data that they had was not completed, the data conversion. And so, there is absolutely no way that we're going to be able to make that happen. So after a few, I would say, stern talking-tos that Tina had with the leadership of the company, the fact that we are not happy about this, it couldn't happen soon enough, to be delaying it more is frustrating. But I just want everybody to know that we've set a hard date that the companies agreed to, that the leadership of the company has agreed to, not just one person that wasn't doing their job. And the date will be November 5th, but it will take us that long to get clean data into the system and make sure that it's working. Correct, Tina? Correct. So that's the information I have for you tonight. Yes, sir?
Manager Foggan, may I ask you for just a department report on the Stockton Hill Road repaving work that's going to be starting this week, or this month as well?
Absolutely. The Stockton Hill Road project is actually a two-phase project. The first phase is water line replacement, a fairly lengthy water line replacement, and then that will be followed up by a repaving project that will resurface the road to make it very nice and smooth. It will start, it's scheduled to start the last week in September, and depending on how quickly they go, the paving should be done, should be done within six months from that time. Now, the thing that I do want to reemphasize, and we're working on this messaging, and we'll be working on the messaging daily, actually, is that all business access will be open. The city will be encouraging all of the community, and anybody who goes to the website or looks at our Facebook, will be encouraging people to continue to access those businesses, kind of excuse our dust. This project's, the resurfacing's really important, but I will tell you, the water line project, as was kind of pointed out in the citizen comment section of the meeting, was, it's in dire strait through that area. And we can either go through and fix this water line all at once, or we can continue to do what we've been doing, which is little emergency sections at a time. It's not the way we want to run our infrastructure. Now, I give you the worst-case scenario of six months, where it benefits the contractor, and it benefits everybody, the faster that he, they, get it done. And so, of course, we're going to be looking at quality and watching the progress, but we're planning on the resurfacing happening about six months from September. So, but the water line project is by far the most important piece of this.
Thank you.
One question? Please. I know you held a seminar workshop for the business owners, and was that received well?
Yeah, it was received well. We had staff there, the contractor was there, and I know what you're going to say, so it was well-received. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report? Thank you. Moving on to announcements by Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. Any announcements?
Yeah, I attended the Airport Commission meeting. It was a very exciting meeting, well-attended. Mr. Husband gave a great detailed report about all the progress that's happening out at our airport, and it's just really exciting to sit through a meeting and hear about all the opportunities that are coming our way, you know, it'd be very good for our city. And one other announcement is that this Friday is first Friday downtown, and I hope to see everybody down there.
And speaking of the downtown, I know at the Center for the Arts, the Wallopi Indians have really a tremendous display, and I believe they'll have their dancers there as well. It's just really a great introduction to their culture, or reinforcement of what they've done, what they've brought to our community, and really what great neighbors they've been for so many years.
Councilmember Waite.
Thank you. Just really quickly, I just wanted to announce that the Youth Advisory Commission had teamed up with a nonprofit organization called Sleep in Heavenly Peace a couple weeks back. And the Youth Advisory Commission spearheaded a project wherein they built 16 beds for children in need here in the local Kingman area. So we're very proud of them for the work that they did. It was a really good leadership experience for them, as well as they were able to help, you know, direct people in the different, I guess, processes that made up, you know, that constituted building a bed. So it was a great opportunity and experience for the youth. We're very proud of them. At this point, we are going to be spending the next little while identifying those children who are, I guess, prioritizing the applications for the beds that we received. And then, we will also be, I guess, continually receiving donations to furnish these beds with mattresses, and pillows, and comforters, and things like that. So we're still seeking donations for that, and as we receive those, we will start to deliver these beds to the children in need. Special shout-out to the EAA, Chapter 765, for allowing us to use the hanger to do this project. It was really generous of them to allow us to do that.
Thank you.
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. We all attended the League of Arizona Cities and Towns meeting recently, really well-attended. They said they had over 1,100 participants. It was really a great opportunity, depending on which breakout sessions, what you attended, a lot of great information, and really pleased we all had the opportunity to attend and meet with other elected officials from across the state. Nothing to report on the MUC Commission, as it was canceled due to lack of agenda items.
I just want to mention something that's coming up in October, but for those that want to get it on their calendar, the 20th Arizona Rural Transportation Summit is going to take place in Lake Havasu, which is an opportunity for some people to go that may not want to travel far. But it's the 24th to 26th, and this is just an opportunity for those that are interested in what's happening with ADOT and our rural transportation issues, to take a look at this. And so, it's online at www.a-zrt-s.org for anybody that wants to look further into this. I'm sure that the city and some of us will be very interested in attending.
Councilmember Lincolnfelter?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Kress?
First of all, Madam Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you for the award that you received at the League for your years of service. Congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Planning and zoning, as Mr. Kellogg indicated, has a lot on its plate. They're trying to do a lot, and I'm just excited about sitting through another cargo container workshop tomorrow. I think we're in the triple digits, I'm not sure. That's all I have.
Thank you for sharing that. So we'll just stay down here, and we're now looking to see, are there any council requests for future agenda work session items and/or calendar adjustments? I'll start with you, if you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lincolnfelter?
Yeah, I have one item, and it goes back to the League Conference. There were some really good economic development presentations and panels, and one of the things that really stuck with me was, one of the site selectors was on the panel, he said, "Over 80% of their successful projects included a building, or a spec shell building, or a flex space building that was already there." So it got me wondering, and I'd like to request a work session item. I know that there's maybe 100 acres left in Phase 1 of the industrial park. I'd like to talk about, with our staff, or with your staff, and with the council, possibly putting out an RFQ or an RFP to do some sort of, explore some sort of a joint partnership, where the city would put in the site, and a company like Prologis, or somebody that does spec shell building space, would come in, erect a temporary or flex shell building. They would be responsible for marketing that facility and filling it, and paying the cities for the land, or some sort of a lease agreement, that we would have some sort of a revenue stream long-term, so I'm not sure if you got all that, but, okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Miles?
I was just, wonder if moving up the water sustainability report would be a good idea, that update, because with budget processes ongoing during that time, I'd be interested in what that commission is looking at, and what they are prioritizing themselves as things to assess, and the cost feasibility. You have it down for January, but I see that we might have some room earlier than that.
I'll talk to staff. I'll talk to staff.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add. Councilmember Yocum?
Yes. I'd like a brief update from, I guess, Mr. Schilling and/or Jack Plante. Quickly, two weeks from today, the 18th, I wouldn't expect it to take more than maybe five minutes, on the CBD, CBDG project for Andy Devine and the curb, and the curb and sidewalk cuts and ADA compliant repairs. I think council was left under the impression when we chose that as the priority for the use of those funds with Mr. Schilling about five months ago, that that was going to be done towards the end of the summer. Thank you.
Councilmember Wade?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Councilmember Staley?
Yeah, I'd like to request an item to look at designs that have already been done for downtown. And talking to Mr. Kellogg, there appears to be some work that's already happened for bumpouts and other things, and it'd be nice to see those presented to the council so that we can discuss them and have an idea of cost and possibly applying for grants or putting that in the budget. Thank you.
Is that everyone? Okay. Moving on to executive session, development agreement with KRMC. City Attorney requests that the City Council go into executive session to discuss and provide direction regarding the development agreement with Kingman Regional Medical Center. We do have someone signed up to speak on this item. Mr. Dickmeyer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Doug Dickmeyer. I'm a resident of Kingman. During the short break, I asked Mr. Cooper if he was still going to suggest that this goes into executive session. He said yes. I said, "I don't think he has legal precedent." And he said, "He was right and I was wrong." I asked him if he had a copy of the ARS that he wrote in this thing, and he said, "Why?" And I asked him, "I would like to have him read it." He says, "He doesn't need to read it because he's right and I'm wrong." He said, "If I got a copy, I can read it." So I'm going to read it, and I'm going to ask Mr. Cooper if this is what he was referring to. ARS 38431-01A. "All meetings of any public body shall be in public meeting, and all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings. All legal action of public bodies shall occur during a public meeting." Is that what you're referring to, Mr. Cooper? Can you hold my clock while he's looking?
I don't answer to Mr. Dickmeyer.
You don't answer a citizen?
If you'd like me to read the statute, I can read the statute, but-
Do you hold my clock while he's speaking? He's taking up my time.
Well, I, I guess, maybe I can ask the question.
The City Council may go into executive session to discuss negotiations, contracts, and the like.
Okay. So that's what this is?
This is not a contract.
Mr. Dickmeyer's incorrect.
Okay.
You have a current contract with KRMC that you're discussing? Come on, Mr. Cooper, you're an attorney. First of all, you've got the wrong statute on the agenda. It's not the one you were trying to refer to.
Mr. Dickmeyer can make his statement, but I'm not going to-
Okay.
Boy, you sure can avoid answering a question. Let me continue. Arizona courts have strictly enforced that the seven authorized executive session topics because their legislative charge is to promote openness in government. Unless a proposed discussion plainly falls within the executive session category, it should take place only in a public meeting. Since Agenda 98 does not fall within these seven executive categories, discussion of this matter must take place in public. Mr. Cooper wanted to quote 38-331-03A4. He is mistaken, so he is wrong. And this states, "Public body may hold an executive session regarding contracts that are subject to negotiation." This is not a contract subject to negotiation. Now, does anybody want to tell me anything different? Do we have a contract with KRMC? Mayor Gates, do we?
I know I'm not, I'm not supposed to respond. Is that correct?
This is not a call to the public. You can answer a citizen's question.
Okay. Not to the best of my knowledge.
There's no contract.
Not to the best of my knowledge, but-
You cannot go in executive session unless it's a contract.
I, this is something that the city attorney has asked for.
Well, the city attorney is wrong. He thinks he's always right, but he's wrong. He posted the wrong statute on the agenda. He is wrong about it because it requires a contract to go into executive session.
Mayor Council, a contract, a development agreement is a contract.
Pardon? What did you say, Mr. Cooper?
A development agreement is a contract.
No, it isn't, because both parties aren't here to talk about it. A development agreement is a contract? It's a proposal from the city, from the hospital.
I don't plan on debating this with him.
Well, you never answer anybody's questions, Mr. Cooper, so I will close this out by saying, any of you that vote on this, you're voting willingly knowing that this is not legal to go in executive session to discuss this. So if you go into executive session to discuss this, I will get in a hold of the Attorney General tomorrow morning, and you will be sanctioned, I guarantee it. Because this is, there's only seven things, and they strictly enforce these seven things for executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Dickmeyer.
Mayor and Council, just for your information, you're not voting on anything?
I didn't.
It's just a status?
Well, I didn't see that this was an action item.
No.
This is merely an update for discussion?
Just a status.
Thank you very much. Having said that, yes?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cooper, exactly how strongly do you feel that this has to be an executive session and not a discussion that we can have here now?
I can give you information, not an executive session, if that's what you would like, and I can phrase that information to not violate any confidentiality's that we would have in a negotiation, which is the process of what we're working through. So if you would like that, I can do that very simply.
I, I would appreciate that, for the sake of transparency and to, to address Mr. Dickmeyer's concerns.
The current status is that we have reviewed their proposal that they have drafted. It needed some substantial rewriting. That rewriting has taken place. The staff are reviewing that currently, and will be submitting that information back to KRMC, hopefully within the week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm thinking now that there's not need for an executive session, if that's what you were going to impart to us. I'm pleased that we could do that in-
I'd like to ask a follow-up question. If there's anything that you would have told us in executive session that we didn't get in public session, could you give us a memo to that? I mean, as far as the confidentiality, because we are, we are negotiating an offer and an acceptance.
Correct. And, and we can definitely provide another update if you'd like. Thank you.
To the best of my knowledge, though, we're not looking to take action at this time. It's not, it's not ready. Okay.
No, there's nothing ready.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's just clarify that. Thank you very much. Because that's really all this was about, was an update where we're at, why this seems to be taking so much longer than we initially thought. Fair enough? Thank you very much. Okay. That's the last item on the agenda. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for attending.